The time is 6:30 and we'll call the meeting to order. And we'll have roll call. We'll announce first though that Board Secretary O'Brien is at the Iowa Association of School Business Officials Convention in Des Moines. And we have Paige Ellsberg filling in as Board Secretary tonight. So would you do roll call, please?
Dyte.
Present.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee.
Present.
Maycomber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Agenda item two is to welcome the visitors. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The Board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As Board President, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the Board to complete the full Board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the Board's authority. Please understand that we as a Board cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa's Sunshine Law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you as an individual may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. And we thank you for your support of the Charles City School District. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item three.
Mr. President, we forgot to approve the agendas.
Oh, I did, didn't I? How did I do that? Oh, we just did the roll call.
Okay.
I guess we need to approve the agenda as well. Thank you for reminding me.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. There weren't any corrections?
No corrections.
Roll call vote, please.
Maycomber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried. Now we'll move on to agenda item three. Dr. Cox.
Thank you. Iowa Association of School Boards has a couple of training opportunities coming up next Monday in Clear Lake. They also have a training on October 21st in Owlin, at the Owlin High School, and on October 27th at Lincoln Intermediate School in Mason City. And those trainings run from 5:30 to 8:30. So that's an information item for you Board members. Homecoming week is next week. Information is posted at our district website, so go to charlescityschools.org and you can find out what's happening Monday through Friday of homecoming week next week. Also, we've had about 200 people take the FEH Facilities Survey. We would love to have more people do that. So if you would go to our website, you can find the survey. It'll take you maybe five minutes to do. You also can find it at the Charles City Chamber website, at the City of Charles City website. So lots of different places where you can go. Please encourage your friends and neighbors to go take that survey and provide your input on facilities for the four entities, the YMCA, the school district, the city, and the county. And then lastly, tonight, we have a special guest with us here in Charles City. She actually is here until October 16th. Her name is Graciela Uiquin, and she is an area superintendent in the city of Buenos Aires. She's here on exchange. Graciela oversees a system of about 6,000 high school students, about 2,000 teachers, and she also serves as the representative for the city of Buenos Aires at the federal level for the Argentine Department of Education. So we're excited to have her here with us.
Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Graciela.
Any Board members have comments?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move to agenda items four, which is project-based learning presentation.
All right. We also are excited to have a special guest with us here. Andrew Miller is a consultant on project-based learning, and he flew in from Tacoma, Washington. He's here, he's been today with our secondary staff, middle and high school teachers, and he'll be doing the same thing tomorrow. He's got an extensive resume. He's presented all around the world, China, Mexico, India, and now Charles City, and we are excited to have him share just a little bit about what is project-based learning. And then I sent him some of those questions, or sent him the questions that you had asked, so he will address some of those as well. So, Andrew.
Great. Yeah, and if I don't address it explicitly, please feel free to ask. I'm happy to answer questions. So it is a two-day workshop that we're working on. Today was focused on designing effective projects. Now, when you think of projects traditionally, we taught, we talked through this today, you think of learning content or skills for maybe two or three weeks, and then implementing some sort of project. And that might be two or three days. So the difference here is we're talking about project-based learning, and it flips that model on its head. So what you do is instead of the project being the curricular add-on at the end of the unit, it becomes the actual delivery vehicle for the instruction. So you give it to students before teaching a majority of the content or skills. Now, why do we do that? Well, because, one, if it's designed well, a project is usually very engaging, usually has some real-world tie-in, usually has kids working teams. So there's a lot of benefits to it. So by presenting it at the forefront, you create the inquiry to learn the actual content. So you're still learning the material that you would have done in the past. It's aligned right to curricular goals and outcomes. It's just that it's a more engaging model, because kids go, hey, hold on, I don't know how to do that skill, or tell me more about that content, or I don't understand how this works. And the teacher jumps in with that kind of just-in-time instruction to support students in the project. So if you were doing a project, for example, one I used today, was about learning about argumentative writing, which is, you know, we talk about the Iowa Core, and there's all those pieces on that. Well, instead of just doing, let's learn about persuasive writing elements and then writing an essay, why don't we contextualize it in a more real-world context? So you might give students the project of how do we convince voters to vote a certain way? And in that project, again, before teaching the content, they're going, well, how do I do that? And who are we voting for? And what are the best techniques to convince people to do something? So you already know that it's already hinting at normal things you would have to be as an ELA instructor. So then you come in and you do your lessons and activities, and students are producing products to showcase the learning. So they might be producing a speech that they would give to, you know, say, hey, you know, you should vote for this candidate. Or they might be producing some sort of commercial that might do that. So there's also an element of voice and choice for students, where students get to pick the appropriate product. We're not talking about do whatever you want, but more of a, here's a scope of choice, here's how you can show what you know in different, a variety of ways. So that also includes some engagement, and all of their work is presented publicly. So that might be they post it on the internet, they work and they present it to parents, or they bring in experts from the field and do a panel presentation. So again, that also ups the engagement. So this kind of takes, what people have done with projects for years, we've been doing these forever, and just kind of seeing how they work, adding some components to make it work in a little more effective way, to increase engagement in the classroom, but also, again, increase deeper learning, increase, and these are all aligned to standard. Every teacher today designed some sort of project, and they looked directly at their learning outcomes and standards and said, this is what I want to assess in this project, this is how students will show what they've known, no matter if we're ELA standards, art standards, CTE standards, math standards. So that's kind of what's happening tomorrow. We are going to dive deeper into assessment. How do you check for understanding along the way? Formative assessment practices. How will that inform your instruction in the project? What are you going to do? What are some rubrics you might create to be able to assess when they turn in these products, that students show what they've know? And then we'll move into some management content. How do you manage things? Normal things that we're worried about, you know, what about the kid who doesn't want to perform? Or what about the kid who struggles to work in teams? So just some normal things that we do for anybody that's implemented a project. Those are kind of the buckets of content that we're going to go through.
I want to ask the question, is there different, what I wouldn't call, different age groups, different projects? I mean, the younger kids wouldn't be doing the same thing as the middle school or the high school.
Absolutely not. You're absolutely right. So, and again, since they're aligned to curricular outcomes, the outcomes are different from grade level. So a sixth grader, for example, is probably going to be doing something a lot, lot different than a ninth grader. Even though, like, for example, argumentative writing is one of those spiraled learning outcomes, it always happens, it's just that it's more complex. And right, as teachers design projects, they're going to pick topics and ideas and projects that are grade-level appropriate, appropriate for maturity level, appropriate content for that. They're not going to pick, you know, crazy ideas that don't make sense for a sixth grader. They're going to think about, because teachers know their kids best. And so they're going to look and go, you know, I feel like this is a good project for my sixth graders. I don't know if this is going to work at ninth grade. Or a 12th grade teacher could say, oh, I could do a little bit more with this. So there's a lot of flexibility for the teacher to design what's best for their students. And so that's the other thing, is it's not prescribed curriculum, it's a delivery method of the content and skills, which I think is, from my personal experience, why I like it so much, because it allows me as a teacher to do great teaching and learning, but also meet the needs of my kids depending on where they're at and what they need for that matter.
There was a question on math, and how does PBL relate to math?
Well, just like any other content, it can, you can do math-based PBL. I think something that many of the math teachers struggle with, I mean, and I see this globally, is math has been taught in a way for a long time. And it's, you know, you might label that traditional, you know, here I will demonstrate how to do some sort of context, and then you will mirror that, and then we will practice, and then we will produce, maybe it's a test or some sort of piece that. So this does take that and kind of make it a little bit different for instruction. So for example, one project I've done is a math project. It has to do with linear equations, a very common learning objective. And in it, students look at cellphone plans and look at cost-benefit analysis to figure out, like, okay, so what would be the best cellphone plan for myself, for this person, my family? And they present this to the student, again, before a majority of that content is taught. So, but the kids are going to go, well, I don't know how to compare this, and I don't know how to calculate whether or not this is a good deal. But that's great, because now they have questions related to the content. And so the teacher is going to have to provide direct instruction on how to do it. So that's another myth of PBL, that it's simply learning by doing, you just go and do things. You're actually giving instruction to support student learning. So there is direct instruction, there's, there could be labs, there could be practice and worksheets. It's just that that happens inside the umbrella of the project. And again, kids are going, well, I don't know how to do that. You say, well, that's a great question. Let me help you, and let's practice, and now let's go look at that cellphone data. So you're still doing that. It's just that it kind of, I guess, provides a little more engagement. Personally, I believe that, but you're still doing all the great instructional pieces that you would normally do as a teacher. I think the other thing that many teachers, reflections, that this is coming from teachers' mouths, is that we're finding that this is a method of delivery, and it is not going to work for everything. This is not a, let's make everything PBL. Let's figure out what will work for this. And so they looked at their math curriculum, they're going, you know, I'm not feeling it for this unit, I'm just not. But this one feels better, let's try it out. So I think that's something we're trying, is trying a few out. Some of these may be two weeks in length. And again, that includes the instruction and the production of the project, so it might be longer, depends on how much we're learning. So that's the other thing, is we're looking for the right fit, not one size fits all for this. So one teacher, I thought was one of a wonderful reflection, he said, you know, Andrew, I'm struggling with this math feature. I'm struggling making a real-world tying with this math. One, is it because maybe there's not a really great authentic tie-in for this math, one? Or two, do, have I just not thought deeply about how it might be real-world? And I said, that is a wonderful reflection. It could be both. Many math teachers are not asked to consistently make real-world connections on math, and so that, that turning on that part of the brain is kind of like, yeah, why do we learn this at all? Why would I use differential equations? Why would I use measurement and data collection? But then as they ask those questions, they can find those real-world tie-ins to projects.
So can you give us some examples of, of where it might be difficult for project-based learning to fit in? I mean, I can understand social studies and English, and I think math is the place where I was having difficulty trying to understand it. But are there some circumstances or some classes where it's just difficult, more difficult than others?
I think, I think I kind of, you know, hinted at it that in math, it's going to, you're going to have to be a little more careful about it. Because, for example, I was joking about it today, but it's also kind of true, like logarithms. Can you think of a real-world connection for logarithms? One, that kids are going to be engaged in. Here, kids, you're going to be financial planners. You know, if you can pull that off, you are the best teacher in the world. I can't. So it's really, it's really about that there might be areas of everyone's content that you struggle to fit inside of a project. And I mean that for everyone. And people ask me, how much of you, were you doing PBL? Well, I'd say in my heyday, I was probably doing about 70% of my instruction was delivered through projects. That meant that there was 30% content standards outcomes over here that either I didn't know how to fit, or I just wasn't clever enough, or maybe didn't fit. So I think it's, it's more about thinking about where are we going to find the fit? Where is a good place to maybe increase the engage in my classroom because I've struggled with it? And just using it as another part of that tool belt that teachers have to increase engagement and hit deeper learning. So I think it's kind of, it really depends on the subject area, but I think all subjects can do some. It just may not be that you have as much flexibility.
Every day. Well, and the fact that we've got a team teaching approach now lined up in the schools, the teachers can collaborate and work together to help one another think outside of the box to come up with some of these units, perhaps.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that the other thing we talked about is if, as the more teachers integrate, I'm actually a big fan of that, because obviously you see connections across content areas. And also it means that kids are working on one project that hits two different areas or three, so they're not being overwhelmed by, oh my goodness, I have so many projects going on. So that's something we also talked about today, like, if you are going to do this, have talks about that, look for integration, one. Or two, make sure you're not all doing it at the same time. So, you know, I'll start on September 1st, can you wait to launch yours and, you know, around, you know, maybe the 30th? Okay, sure. So those conversations and collaboration moments are going to help the implementation of it.
You mentioned assessments. Is that one of the tougher parts of this implementation? And is there, I want to say conflict with aligning it to assessments by the state or in the standardized testing? How, how are we going to get to that part of this process? Is that a, have you seen struggles with that in other areas or states, or?
I, I, I mean, standardized testing is always a struggle. I mean, when I went to India, teachers were like, we have these tests, they're gateways. I mean, and even more there than they are here. And, I mean, if you don't, it's over. I mean, really, for a lot of kids there. So there's always a concern, and I'm going to talk more about strategies for that tomorrow, but there is research to support that says that students will perform as better if not, or, you know, as good if not better on standardized tests. There's actually a big push right now, Edutopia, the George Lucas Educational Foundation, is doing a lot of work on AP classes. And we know how content-heavy and skilled those classes are, right? Like, it's like, no world history in a year ago. I mean, that's crazy. But they're doing research in there, and they're finding that students are more successful in those project-based classes where it's part of the learning. Kids are retaining the information more because they remember, I remember when we learned about that thing in that real-world context, and it was meaningful to me, and I was able to show what I know. So students are retaining the information, and they're performing better. And actually specifically, when you go to some of these exams, right, you have multiple choice questions, but the ones they're doing better at are those more critical thinking, problem-solving questions. And that's the other part about PBL that's got to benefit you. In addition to building content skills, you're building problem-solving, collaboration, critical thinking, perseverance skills that are transferable across any sort of situation or content. So when they go and take a test, they're going to be like, okay, I can do this, I have that critical thinking thing, I did it in a project, I'll try it out here. So I think that, you know, you know, there is a little bit, there's always going to be a tension, but something I'm also going to push tomorrow for them specifically is not to assign these products and give a test, because it kind of defeats the purpose, right? If students show what they know in a speech, or in a podcast, or in a presentation, you don't need to give them a test. I do encourage to do formative assessment that looks like normal, traditional assessment, give a quiz. Grab a prompt from the AP exam that looks just like the thing you're doing, you know what I mean? Or, or from the state level. I do that all the time. So embedding those as more check-in moments rather than you might call the major epic test at the end, one, prepares them for the exam because they're seeing what it looks like. And two, provides better data for you because it informs the instruction rather than just, this is how you show what you know.
Something I've liked about it is that you're not necessarily, it's not pass/fail based on the outcome of your project necessarily. You may, you know, we heard an example from a student last year where he got to the end of his project and he essentially failed, but the process is what, you know, he learned so much from that was so valuable, and, you know, how that, you know, translates to some of the testing, and that was kind of how it was interesting, how that worked out, I guess.
Definitely. I think it's definitely, when we think about the grading piece, grading's always, grading, anytime you change grading practices, if there, I actually think it's very much, very much like when you have a death in the family. You go through the phases of grief. Denial, this isn't happening. Frustration, maybe some bargaining, acceptance, and then, you know, all that whole phrase. So, because there's something about assessment and grading that's so personal to who we are, like, it's just here, like, in our heart of hearts, and we have very deep-held beliefs about that. But I find that when you do projects, you're creating engagement and the opportunity for students to what I call fail forward. So if they do, for example, in the first check-in moment in this project on world religions, you take, give them a quiz on Christianity and the basic tenets, all the texts, all that good stuff, you take that quiz and they don't do so hot, because that happens. Then you work with that student, you say, okay, cool, cool, no problem. What do you need? How can I provide more instruction? What resources? So that when they do get to that summative product, that's more things, they'll, you'll know right here what the student needs, so that when they get to this final moment, you will have closed that gap. So when they produce, in this case, a presentation about it, you know early on what they didn't know, and you close that gap. That's just good teaching, and that's part of the PBL model, to ensure that all kids, by the time they get to it, you know what's going on, let's fill in those gaps, and you're going to be fine.
Have you ever had any students that just cannot learn using PBL that have had to stick with the standard?
Sometimes I know teachers may offer, in voice and choice, a test for students who just really struggle or resist. I think it's where, where teachers, where here most teachers say, gosh, I can't do this because of, you know, something with the kids. It has to do with more of those collaboration skills than it has to do with, like, learning the content. So it, so that's something we also talk about, that you've got to build the culture in your classroom for this, number one. And two, students need to be explicitly taught the skills of collaboration and working in teams if they're going to do this. You can't just say, go collaborate, students. Anybody who's in the classroom knows how ineffective that is, you know? You're going to get hit or miss on results. So kids need to be taught how to give good feedback to each other, how to receive that feedback effectively, how to, how to be polite to team members, how to come to consensus. And those are things that teachers should be embedding in their projects, as well as perhaps just embedding throughout the year. And, and I think that's important, you know, when they talk about employability skills, when they talk about, you know, what's the, and that's funny, I mentioned that, what's the number one thing that major business people say they don't have from kids? They can't work a team. So this gives an opportunity to build, you would call, not only college-ready, career-ready kids, so that the experiences they have in college, they, they'll know how to work in teams, they'll know how to persevere through something, they'll know how to, when they get a problem, ask for support, self-advocate. So it's, it's both the content and the skills.
It sounds like we're filling a huge void that we've missed in education in the past.
And something I always like to say is that content, it doesn't go out the window at all with this. Again, we're, we're hitting standard outcomes, and you can't, for example, you can't collaborate about nothing. You collaborate with whatever content you're learning. You can't critically think about nothing. Like, okay, that's where content is coming. So you can't, it's not about one or the other, it's about, well, I have to have both in order to make this effective. So it's one of the challenges will be for teachers, is they're very good at assessing content skills, how are they at assessing these soft skills? And I did say assess, I didn't say grade, those are different words. But I think kids need to know, for example, how are you doing with collaborating with your peers? Here is a rubric, let us self-assess, let me give you feedback, let's peer assess, let's set goals. Like, kids need that, just as, just like we do with, here's where you are in this math content, how can you get better? I think they need it in something like collaboration, otherwise, who knows what those tangible goals will be for kids.
Thank you very much. We're very pleased to have you in Charles City. Hope things go well tomorrow.
I do too. I think we're going to have a good time. We've had a good time today, but thanks for having me, I really appreciate it, and happy to talk to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item five is swimming pool, and this is an information-only item.
Correct. And so as part of those cost-cutting measures from last spring, we had talked about some different options with the swimming pool. So I've placed before you some information that if we close the pool at the end of February and open it back up again on August 1st, that we can generate in the neighborhood of $19,000, maybe a little more than $19,000 in savings. That takes us through the YMCA swimming season and what the most, most of the opportunities where the city has used the pool as well. But this is something that we can do to help with that general fund, and so it's an information item for you tonight, just of you.
Was there any comments on, sometimes, I mean, I'm not against what you're recommending, but I just got a question I wanted to ask, is sometimes lack of use is harder on equipment than using it regularly. To shut it down and then start it back up again is harder on it than keeping it activated. Is that, I mean, is there any comments on that on the people you've talked to, or?
No, I don't have any.
Yeah, I talked to Jerry, I had asked him the same question. He said that he had consulted with several pool professionals, and they all foresee no problems at all.
No problems.
You know, with that. So I, I think this is, you know, a good start. I had met with, you know, quite a while back, representatives from the city, the Y. Jerry was there, Dan might have been there, Dr. Cox might have been there one time, one or two times, in the city, and make the parking rec folks. So we had kind of brainstormed some things, and they were all in support of this for the most part, but I thought that we would maybe pull that meeting group back together one more time to kind of show them this as well, see what they think about it, see if there's any other ways that they can contribute to the cost of operation of the pool. And then we talked about maybe a fundraiser or something too for the YMCA swim team that would hopefully help boost this number at least a little bit.
Dr. Cox, can we take a few steps back and
Sure.
...talk about why are we looking at cost savings here with the pool at this time?
Right. So last school year, we had a loss of 47 students due to that large graduating class that left in 2014. And with the loss of students comes a loss of state dollars, and we were looking at ways that we could be more efficient with our expenditures. And we made a lot of, we trimmed a lot last year. We had some positions that we didn't fill, kind of all areas were touched, and this was one way that we could add to those savings to, again, cushion the general fund so that that money can be used for student academic benefit. So that's where this is coming from.
Yes, okay. I had a question regarding, because one of the main reasons, well, a big group of people that's very interested in this swimming pool, of course, is the swim team and their parents. And do we know if the swim team has done any fundraising at all, or have any plans for fundraising? You know, we heard a lot from them last spring when we discussed all of this, and they had a lot of good ideas about how they were going to fundraise and what should be done, and a lot of good ideas about how they were going to fundraise and what should be done. And has anyone come forward to do anything like that?
It's probably part of Jason's conversation that he had with those people and will do it.
I'm not aware of anything that's gone on, but we need to continue to work to build something with the YMCA swim program and our high school.
And our own. I had talked with one mother and one team member, and it doesn't sound like anything has, or their communication of anything that's coming is has not been shared, so.
I'm not aware of anything either that may have been done yet.
They had a website that was gathering donations for a while. I think that stopped short of somewhere around three thousand dollars. So and I think Jerry was going to be in contact with that gentleman running that to try and pull that money in to cover some expenses that he had with the pool.
And by the time we get to February, our swim team activities are over.
Along with the YMCA.
Along with the Y. And so there's that pool is maybe just idle with possibly the exception of maybe PE classes, but that could all be moved into these earlier trimesters.
Correct. And that's why it's here tonight is, again, to be a little more public with that, so that people can plan accordingly. We've had some kayaking
Yes.
Experiences in the
Cabin fever weekend.
That's right. And so just to make it on everyone's radar that here is something that we intend to do as a way to, you know, save some money.
Very good.
Okay. Question I was going to ask too, Marine, what caused you to choose this time zone?
Because of the line
Because everything drops off and no use against it?
Right. It went through the YMCA swim season. Most of our PE swimming can be accommodated then in that those first two trimesters. That's when the bulk of the activity was. Even the, like the Iowa Winter Games would have been at the end of January, cabin fever weekend, it's about that same time.
The beginning of February, yes.
Right. So this this really was an attempt to accommodate the people who most actively use the pool.
Okay.
And then also generate some savings.
So the practice starts in like in August?
Correct.
For the swim season?
Correct.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Moving on to agenda item six, the peanut policy. And we'll turn that over to Dr. Cox.
And I'll have Justin, are you ready? There we go. So peanuts, tree nuts, and then really food allergy, I took a little bit larger look with this. So the first question would be, what do the experts say about food allergies? The National Association of School Nurses recommends providing an allergen-safe area. They also do not recommend a complete ban, because it gives a false sense of security. And they recommend annual training for staff as to food allergens, students who are who have those food allergy, who have food allergies, and then how to keep areas safe, and then also how to use EpiPens and all of the things related with student safety. Center for Disease Control, for the school board, they recommend that you develop policy, that you prepare for food emergencies, that you support training for staff, so you see that, again, creating a healthy and safe environment, and then educating students in the public about food allergies. The National School Board Association recommends keeping classrooms allergen-free. Again, they support training and the development of policies. So how are other Iowa school districts addressing food allergies? Peanut-aware or allergy-aware is a common term that our school nurse got when she contacted all of the fellow school nurses through her listserv. So I'll show you a few slides of which districts are peanut-aware or allergy-aware, meaning that those products can be brought into the school system, but they've got policies and procedures in place for either classrooms where it can't be brought, or tables, or other methods of keeping students safe. So I'm not going to read all of these to you, but you'll notice some schools that you recognize. You'll probably notice ones that you have never heard of before. This is all across Iowa. So South of Bryan would be way out to the west, Osage, our neighbor's just to the north. Here's a second set of schools. So they're big, they're small. You'll notice that Des Moines is in there, some near Fredericksburg. So again, large systems, small systems, and everything in between.
So the Des Moines school system, every building in the entire Des Moines school district is?
It's just
As a district, they would be peanut-aware.
Peanut-aware.
Or allergy-aware. That it's becoming a more expansive term, so that it isn't just peanuts or tree nuts. There are eight very common food allergies. And so how do you make your staff aware of all of that? And then including things like latex as well, that some people have severe reactions to. The peanut-free school districts, completely free would be on the right. Coon Rapids Bayard, very small, River Valley, very small, both out in western Iowa, and then Galen Catholic in Lamar's, also out to the west. North Butler, Boone, and Madrid, at the elementary level, are peanut-free. And then Marshalltown has some schools that are peanut-free, others that are peanut-aware. And those were the only ones off her list. And in my own searching, as I tried to find who other which other schools are peanut-free, that's all that I came up with.
So there's just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We're the eighth.
Yes. But since we have one building that isn't
We're ruling out.
Would you call us peanut-free?
Well, we would be with Marshalltown.
We'd be like Marshalltown with with some schools that are, and then one that currently is not. So we took public input at our district website and Facebook pages. And this is not a popularity contest also. So just because of the numbers that you see, that isn't the reason that you're going to choose to do what you're going to choose to do. Seven people wrote in to say, "Keep the ban in place." Thirty-two wrote in to say, "No, we would like to have no ban on peanut butter, or peanuts, or tree nuts." And then four who said, "Well, there has to be some sort of compromise that we can find, whether it's classrooms only, or certain areas of the school, but we need to find some common ground between these two positions." We had response from the families of the twelve students. So I had the school nurse make contact, and she shared with me that she had either called or emailed the families of the twelve students. Three told her they wanted to keep with the ban, four were okay with change, and five she got no response from. Now, I heard from one today who said, "I never got contacted." But again, the nurse had said, "I made contact with everyone," so and we've got some parents who are here who will speak to you. That was the information that I got on Friday from her about the twelve. And the recommendation that I'm presenting for you tonight is that you direct your board policy committee to draft a life-threatening allergy policy. And that would be modeled after Waukees Community Schools. And they were cited by the National School Board Association as one of the districts across the country that had really taken a proactive approach that was being effective. Waukees, Liberty, Missouri, the state of Connecticut, those were the ones that were highlighted. So that's the information that I have for you tonight, and certainly would take any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board for the administration?
You know, as you had said, there were eight different allergies that are highlighted. And, you know, just to note to the public, those are milk, eggs, peanuts, tree nuts, fish, shellfish, soy, and wheat. And and so it's not just peanuts, it's all of those things really that we need to be concerned and trained for in case there was a situation.
And then beyond food with latex, that was one that came up
Yeah.
With some severe allergies.
And but over and over again, you read that a banning of any of those substances, and quite honestly, where do you draw the line? Because, you know, I had somebody tell me today, "I'm allergic to red dye number fourteen, and I carry an EpiPen." Well, who would ever think of that? You know, I don't know where you draw the line. But the fact is that in school, we learn about a lot of things. And maybe all learning how to deal and work within one's allergies are just one more thing.
Yeah, I did extensive amount of re, as much Google research as you can do in the last, this last meeting. And overwhelmingly, all of the professional organizations that Dr. Cox had cited, the National Association of School Nurses, the Centers for Disease Control, the all the National School Board Association, a number of them, the food allergy and research education folks, all of them recommended against a ban. And what struck, what hit home with me with that is that in the five or six years I've lived here, I've had dozens and dozens of examples of people say that, "Oh, jeez, we went to a basketball game and we took such and such, and we didn't didn't know, you know, that it wasn't." Or so-and-so sent something in their kid's lunch and didn't realize that it was this. So there were so many examples that I've heard of of where things have come into the buildings, even though we are, you know, many of our, most of our buildings are currently nut-free. It's still happening. And I had one woman email me about an example that she had at a middle school volleyball game where one of our students or athletes was affected by it. And it was in our building that's supposed to be nut-free, and that, you know, we still had an incident with it. So that that, to me, says that we need to do something. We need to address this somehow, some way. And the awareness and, you know, more opportunities for educating our kids and also our community for things would hopefully be a little bit of a compromise in my opinion.
I talked to students, and there are nuts in our schools, our buildings that are supposed to be peanut-free and nut-free. There's nuts in these buildings, and they come in regularly. We are giving a false sense of security. So this is a good topic to be taking a very, very good look at and coming up with an aggressive policy, so that we're not giving those false securities.
I'm hoping that a policy that we come up with, and if we remove the ban, that it doesn't segregate the students and say, "Because you eat peanut butter, you got to sit over here." It's just like, if you've got black hair, you've got to sit over here. You know, and apparently, this incident in the gym was clear across the building. So it's it's not just contact. I mean, so keeping them contact-free is not the answer either. But there's some, there's got to be some way to come up with a compromise.
And that is the medical response to that. And, you know, one of these things that I highlighted in the CDC material was, it says twenty-five percent of severe allergy reactions experienced at school are among children who have never had any other food allergy reaction. So, you know, got to be prepared for that.
Do all the children that have peanut allergy or allergy carry a pin?
No, because they're not all as severely allergic.
Okay. Now, does the school have, school nurse have access to a pin? If, or do they need more training on that before they can use the pin and be safe using it? I mean, you might give the pin for some something that you're not using, I mean, not for the right product.
Right. No, she has
Reaction.
Yeah, she's able to do that.
She's able to do that.
You had you had mentioned the separate tables, and there were ten school districts that talked about separate tables. And I know that had been a concern at the last board meeting as well. Something I found interesting that a couple of the schools do, they don't have a separate table over here for the students with food allergies, because like you say, we don't want to
Yeah.
Make them feel any different than the rest of the students. They had hot lunch-only tables, where only people with hot lunch can sit, and the students that had the severe food allergies, because there are no nuts in the food program, then they know they can safely sit there. And I was talking with the nurse, and she said, "Well, there may be some students who still want to bring their own lunch from home." I think those are things that we can navigate, either as the board policy committee or with some further input. But I liked that approach of saying, "This is the majority, and you're going to be part of that. And if you bring peanut butter from home, then that will be your table." Because, okay, that's where you, we know we can keep that safe and separate from the rest of our population. But I think that would be perhaps a better approach than saying, "There's the nut-free zone."
Okay.
And making it hard for students with food allergies to be part of the whole school system. Yeah.
Makes sense. And I think it's important to re-mention that if we're talking about lifting a peanut ban and just making us allergy-aware, that we're still intending on keeping our lunch, hot lunches, though, would still be peanut and nut-free.
And our kitchens.
Our kitchens.
And we certainly probably, I would think that we would keep some classrooms as well, that where are there severe allergies, that classroom, there is no food that gets brought into it. If we're going to, at the elementary level, for example, if there are going to be birthday celebrations, that takes place in the cafeteria. Food is not brought into the classroom. That is a safe zone for everyone. And I think we can handle it that way. And many other schools are doing that as well.
Just as our PBL presentation was, to me, this falls into that category. We're teaching real-world interaction here. I know schools need to be safe havens, but we also need to be teaching reality and how these children need to go on into college and into work. And I also think teaching students about these allergies also goes hand in hand with our our emphasis on character counts, respecting each other, you know, looking out for each other, and taking pride in knowing, "You're eating at this table so that these people can be safe." As opposed to, "Oh, I have to eat over here because I'm doing this." And looking, it's not. It's something to be proud about, that you're taking a step to make sure that your friends and your fellow students are safe.
Good point. I have a high school student that I recently hired and started working with me this fall, and we've had the discussion. And he doesn't know anyone at the high school who has a peanut allergy, but he knows of someone who has a milk allergy. But we have milk every day in the kitchen and available to eat, so.
Is it a life-threatening milk allergy?
That he wasn't aware of.
Because that would be the difference that
Correct.
With peanuts, it can be life-threatening, or with tree nuts.
Well, let me interject. I know someone who has a milk allergy that carries an EpiPen.
Because it
Right.
Potentially is life-threatening.
And they just deal with it and cope with it.
Correct.
And, you know, they still have to pay for the milk, even though they don't take it.
Right. And I've heard the same thing.
Yeah.
But I think our staff, we need to make sure that our staff is well-aware when this student has, starts having a reaction of some kind, that we can diagnose it and get help.
I think our staff are probably at this point aware, more so aware than what we are aware.
They probably
And they're watching out for these children. Because we haven't had, you know, we don't have a list of these incidents. So somebody's, somebody's watching.
Somebody's looking out for them.
Yeah.
One of the things that I had seen on some social media sites and heard around was, "Why are we even talking about this again?" And so, since I brought it up, I guess I'll answer the question. Based upon the other research I've seen as well, in Googling different websites on this topic, almost all of them say that topics and policies about allergens should be reviewed annually, or at least all of our board policies are supposed to be reviewed every three years.
Every five.
Every five. So, you know.
And it's been longer than five.
And it's been longer than five since this policy or or this topic was discussed. You have all new board members since 2008. You have half of your administration who is new. So things should be discussed every three to five years to keep things on the forefront and available for discussion. And one of the things that I had heard or had talked about also was, we should be able to have conversations about things and agree to disagree or find compromise and move forward as a community. So, you know, I just wanted to address those, that it's okay to have conversations, it's okay to disagree. Let's see if we can't find compromises somewhere, so that we can move forward.
Can I ask that the, if, when we make this this motion, if we can ask the policy committee to also, as they're talking about cafeterias and hot lunch and so forth, to also review, do we bring, when kids need to bring treats to school? Like, for example, there was a grandparents' tea today. You know, I don't know if those were all home-baked, or if these are cookies and things brought from home. But maybe we should look at, you know, with keeping those classrooms allergen-free, or at least if it's a prepackaged food, then a child that has a problem would know, "Oh, I can eat this. It doesn't have milk." Or, "I can eat this, it doesn't have whatever it is."
And many schools have gone to that, that if it isn't prepackaged with the label still on it
Yes.
It cannot be brought in
Yes.
For treats or any of those types of things.
You know, homemade is good, but, you know, this is the real world, and allergies are on the rise, as we've been all learning.
Several of the policies from other districts I'd read, and Waukees too, is that what I had looked at in that, the only change really from a ban essentially was the allowance of it in cold lunches. And they had addressed that with, like you said, the hot lunch versus cold lunch tables, you know, and how they would do that. But everything else operated similarly, or essentially like our bans operate within the classrooms and that. So that, I thought, was was somewhat of a good compromise.
Well, I think last fall, one of the meetings we were having on the new building that PLDD brought in snacks for everybody, and then you informed that we couldn't have peanuts. They took everything with peanuts in out, and took it back out and replaced them with something else.
My other question was, I know the legislature last year had made some change to increase the availability, or make it easier for the availability of EpiPens or medicine in the schools. Has the Department of Ed given any direction on that and how it can be implemented? Or is there, are there training opportunities for the the school staff that that we should be looking at implementing or applying? Is that?
Nothing that comes to mind, but I'll I'll look at that for our next meeting.
So they didn't know if that's something that we needed to look at as well? If they had made this so that it's much more available, and we can get more staff trained and aware, then do they have some guidance on implementing that or not? Maybe not, they just said, "Here you go."
Just as a barometer, I called Hy-Vee today and asked the question in the pharmacy. And to get that an EpiPen, you first need a doctor's prescription. Probably a doctor would work with us under the circumstances that we're work, that we're working with. And an EpiPen costs five hundred and fifty-two dollars, because of course, we don't have any insurance that's going to cover it for this unknown student at, just in case, you know. So and that is for two EpiPens that come in that prescription, and the shelf life is about, is a little bit over a year. It's maybe about fourteen to sixteen months. She couldn't tell because she didn't know exactly when that pen came into the pharmacy. So, you know, that's that's going to be some cost.
The student's parents probably got insurance to cover it, and they could supply the school with, for their kid, or for, you know, for their kid.
Well, that's what I had wondered about this new legislation last year, and how it would be implemented if all of a sudden schools could have more availability of it, how the cost would be addressed. You know, like you said, I had no idea the cost.
Yeah, I was surprised.
And then the legal ramifications. If it's not a prescription, and we administer an EpiPen, that's a medication we're administering without a doctor's.
Yeah, that's what I appreciate.
So, I don't even, that would have to be something legally.
Child's parents should supply, put his name on it.
So, the administration's recommendation is in your packet. The question I would have is, October 12th too soon to come back?
Potentially. I mean, it's, it's two weeks.
We could, we could push it back a month.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Do you want to leave that date out of the?
Motion.
Motion? Just come back at a future meeting?
Well, sooner than later, but.
Yeah.
I'm, okay, Jason and I are on the Policy Committee, and I'm questioning whether or not a two-week period of time.
Just two weeks enough time, yeah.
Is too short, because actually, you know, we would need to be completed with this by next Thursday.
Oh, geez.
A week from Thursday to get it in your packet for Friday.
I would suggest we bring it back to the first meeting in November.
Take the date out, and if it's ready for the end of October, maybe.
Okay.
But let's.
We'll bring it back. I don't want to be bound by this personally, because I think we're pushing the timeframe.
Too quick to get it.
But I don't want to take six weeks either.
Right.
I just know that for us to get together in the next six or seven business days, maybe pushing it.
Want a motion?
Good point to take public comment.
Well, we normally take public comment after there's a motion.
Okay.
All right. I'll move to approve to direct the Board Policy Committee to draft a policy on life-threatening allergies that will be brought back to the Board at a future meeting for the first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion from the Board? Any comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Nicole Marth. This is my husband, Derek Marth. I am owner and operator of Four Monsters Bakery, which happens to be a peanut-free home bakery. I'm licensed by the state, and I just wanted to mention that. I'm here to talk in behalf of my son, Abram Marth, who has been in the Trail City School System since he was in kindergarten in 2006 at Washington School, which at that time, we got them to take the peanut and nut policy seriously, and they banned peanuts and nuts from the school. He is now a ninth grader at the high school, entered it obviously this year. And I'm just here to talk about my son's allergy and the severity of it, and the education that comes with those types of allergies. There's different severities for nut allergies. He's at the higher end, meaning that not just eating nuts, but also coming in contact, whether it would be airborne or skin contact, could possibly not just cause him to have a small reaction, but also to cause him to go into anaphylactic shock and possibly die. Do you have anything you want to say? Yeah, I'm a little shaky, so I apologize.
Relax.
I get a little passionate, yeah. He is also allergic severely to both soy and shellfish, so those are kind of another issue for him. He takes the school lunch every single day. Hot lunch, he cannot eat because he usually throws it up. There's a lot of soy byproduct in some of the school lunches. That's something he's dealt with his whole entire life. So when we talk about different tables and sitting him in different places, that's an issue. And I know you talked some about that. I also think when you decide this, and I see that there's some varying opinions on the Board. I know that at Lincoln School this year, they no longer have a nut allergy. And I have a third grader that goes there. She does not have an allergy, but she does notice that those three students that have allergies in that school are segregated to a table by themselves. She doesn't understand why. She feels some sense of pity for them. She's like, "Mom, they have to sit by themselves." You know, it's, it's kind of sad. So that's kind of hard to hear as a mother with a child that has a nut allergy, just like any other kind of segregation. School is hard as it is, and children pick at children, you know, for any other reason. So I just wanted to give my opinion on that. I was just trying to write. When he started school in 2006, there was probably one or two other students in the school system that I'm aware of that had a nut allergy. Now, it's quite a few years later, and there are 12 students in our school district. You know, allergies are on the rise. It's about 3 million people in the United States now that have nut allergies in our schools, or as far, you know, total. I'm sorry, I'm not very nervous. I just, I'm very passionate about keeping my child safe. As far as education and awareness, the people that you really should be talking about in your school system are the children themselves. They've been educated their whole life. My son found out, he had a, we found out he had a peanut allergy when he was one years old. He ate a peanut butter cookie, and he swelled. And from that point on, we've educated him. And he's educated others by his allergy. So I think if you're going to really sit down and you really want to know the type of students and their allergies in your schools, you need to actually sit with them. I never did receive a phone call from the nurse. I never received an email from the nurse. I'm obviously one of the people that wrote in to the Board. I would have liked a phone call. I have phone calls all the time from all the schools about my children. It's easy to find me. I'm on Facebook, I'm everywhere. So it would have been easy to contact me. And I did not receive a phone call, and neither did my husband. So that's a little disappointing. So I never even got a voicemail. I just, I just want you to seriously take this. I mean, it's easy to pull things from other schools who have, how many children, I don't know. I mean, you pulled statistics from other schools in Iowa. How many children have those allergies in those schools? That'd be nice to see. Is it one child? Is it five children? Is it 25 children? You know, there's a reason why they put different bans or different rules in place. But ultimately, it's about the students in your district and what's important to keep them safe. And even if they were allowed to bring peanut butter sandwiches to school, are they walking through the halls with those bags? Are you, is there somebody standing there making sure they're washing their hands ultimately? You know, there's lots of ways to cross-contaminate. For instance, my son's been touched by peanut butter products before, just on his skin. It ultimately boils, it bruises, he welts. You know, he could have breathing problems. So it's extremely severe. It's not just like, and I don't want to talk for people who have milk allergies or anything. It's not just, you know, eating. It's a lot of other things that are involved. And it's a scary thing as a parent. You want to send them to school knowing they're safe. We don't allow weapons in the school. We don't allow bullying in the school. We try to do as much as we can to keep them safe. And there's been incidents even on the buses where people have brought peanut butter cups and other things. That, it's harder to maintain, and I understand that. In a real-life setting, my son does really well. And we understand that he's growing up, and he's going to have to deal with that on an everyday basis. But, you know, in a school, he should feel no anxiety. It's already hard to be a ninth grader. You know, it's hard to be a teenager. It's hard to be an elementary student. And you want to give them that free, safe zone where they don't have to be worried. And to be worried about whether or not there's a chance that you could get sick that day or die that day possibly is extreme. So I guess that's all I really have to say.
I do want to make one quick point. As far as real-world experience, he is a very responsible child. He fully understands his allergy. When he went to the allergist to begin with, they will not test him for peanuts, because any reaction can be life-threatening, even if he's at a doctor's office.
It's a split second. So, and he's carried an EpiPen since he was four. We've always given it to the school nurse. He carries one on him at all times. You know, a reaction across school, if he didn't have the EpiPen on him, he most likely would be death. There would be not enough time. And in the high school, I, I'm not certain, but I can guarantee you that that, every single educator or adult in that building is educated fully to what it really means to have a child with a peanut allergy.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. Has he ever had, had issues in the schools?
He, um, not the EpiPen.
He's never.
We're very vigilant about that. He has had issues with the hot lunches when he was in fourth grade, which we were not aware of until quite late into it. He was coming to school, eating hot lunch, and thinking where he was okay, until I got a phone call from his teacher telling me he was throwing up every single day right after lunch. So obviously, you know, our responsibility as parents is to make sure that if that's not going to work out, and I worked even with the ladies in the lunchroom to help him out too, but we brought our own school lunch, and we're perfectly fine with that. That, you know, we know that our child is safe. So, but, you know, honestly, if I had to be honest, up till now, I've had wonderful experiences with the school nurses, with his teachers. You know, it's been a really good experience on my end. And that's, I can only speak for my family. I would be very disappointed and quite upset if this was to change. And as a mother of a child who's had this allergy in the school system for as long as I have, I feel kind of beholden to say that, you know, for those small students that are just entering the school system, I would wish that, you know, there would be a safety, you know, mechanism in place for them also. Because maybe their parents are unaware of how desperately, you know, dangerous, because obviously, there's only eight, there are four sets of parents out of eight children here. And everybody has their own opinion and have the right to raise their children their own way. But for my child, it is a life and death situation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Mrs. DeVore come up.
One of the things that I'd also seen on social media was wondering why some of the parents of children with the peanut allergy hadn't been contacted by Board members themselves? Well, that would be a violation of HIPAA law and rules. We do not have access to students' medical records or their personal information. Those are things that we have paid faculty and staff to handle. And so that's why we didn't contact people directly? We asked our staff to take care of that for us.
Well, and beyond HIPAA, it, it wouldn't be the responsibility of a Board member to make those phone calls. You hire the superintendent, who then hires staff to do that work for you and to bring it back. So, and I apologize that there were some that were not contacted. My information is that every family was contacted. But I, I saw Mrs. DeVore shaking her head, "No."
I, I was surprised by your comment about your daughter in terms of the segregation, in terms of at Lincoln. And there is not a policy in place right now at Lincoln in terms of students who, who have allergies sitting at a specific table. And so I, that was curious to me. So I would want to talk with her and find out what she's observing a little bit more.
You need to come back up to the microphone, please, so that everybody can hear.
So we can tell by this.
And maybe there was a mistake on my part. I'm not certain. I know that it's a nut. It allows nuts, and maybe they had, the students that had nuts.
Cold lunches.
Yes, and that could be a possibility. So I do apologize if that's a miscommunication. I'm just aware of that, and if, you know, and maybe, and I'm not certain if that's correct or not. But if, she seems to understand very well the nut allergy, they're very foremost, you know, they think about that. So if those students were not the nut allergy children, I'm not sure. And she was a third grader. So I do apologize that that is a miscommunication. I'm not 100% certain. That's what she came home and she told me. And so as a parent, ultimately, you just think, even if that isn't the case, I don't want my child to be segregated in any way, you know. Or made them, because as it is, it's kind of like, it's just hard as it is, you know. So that was my point.
Absolutely, I totally understand. But it's, I just wanted to put that out there. One of the questions that I've gotten is, "Why is Lincoln different from the other buildings?" And prior to our grade-alike configuration, we had Washington Elementary, which was a nut-free building, and Lincoln, which was a, which allowed nuts. And so when we went to the grade-alike reconfigure, we were in the process of reevaluating that when the Board took up this issue. And so we made an administrative decision that we were not going to make any changes to Lincoln's current policy as we waited for direction from the Board. And so that's kind of where we were at. Because prior to the grade-alike realignment, families had a choice. If they truly needed a nut-free environment, they had that at Washington. And that's just a little bit of the history on why that's different.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
My name is Missy Freund, and my daughter Riley is in first grade at Washington. I, obviously, since Washington is a nut-free school, my older daughter is in third grade. She went to Washington. I never really thought about this being an issue for our family because we weren't going to be going to Lincoln. And I learned Lincoln was not nut-free when my girls were at Wise Guys there, because Wise Guys was held at Lincoln School, and nuts were allowed in that program, which did make me a little bit nervous. My daughter, we've known that she's had a peanut, or a tree nut. It's peanuts and tree nuts, all nuts, since she was two and a half. The only major reaction that she's ever had, she ate peanuts and immediately told me she was choking, she had trouble breathing, and I turned around, she was swollen, and immediately began throwing up. I didn't really understand what was going on. We were actually, my car was broken down, and we were in a shop. And all the mechanics were gone, in a town we didn't know. My dad gave her water, and she ended up being okay. And then we got her tested when we came home. But her allergist has said, "As she gets older, and every time she's exposed, her allergy will become more severe." I have never taken her back to the allergist. That entire process was very difficult for her, having blood drawn. And, you know, it's just not something you want to go through. So I have never reevaluated it. And to be honest, this is making me think that maybe I should take her back to the allergist just to have her allergy reevaluated now that she's a little bit older too. My biggest concern, though, is with her age. She's six. I have eaten school lunch with her, and you see all the kids. They're wild, they're crazy. The staff tries to keep control, but I mean, they're little kids. They're antsy, they want to go play at recess. If they have peanut butter, and it's not, to me, I look at peanut butter differently than anything else, because peanut butter is easily, you can easily leave a residue. You can easily get it on your fingers, maybe not notice it, touch something else. You've left peanut butter residue. She could come, touch that, touch her face, she swells up. You know, and the first thing they do when they're done with lunch is they go out on the playground, immediately go to recess. I don't see any of those kids stopping at the bathroom to wash their hands before they go outside. So who's to say that those kids who've eaten a peanut butter sandwich for lunch, that, you know, they're six, they have peanut butter on their hands, they go outside and they play? You know, my concern isn't for my daughter not being aware of her allergy, because she's extremely aware. I mean, when she was three, her first Halloween, going around with her nut allergy, I taught her to say, "Trick or treat, no peanuts, please." You know, I mean, she's, she's extremely aware of it, and she, she will ask if anybody gives her anything. Are there nuts in this? It's the other kids that I, and they're little, they don't know. They're not going to understand the severity of an allergy to a child that could kill them. As far as I know, she has one EpiPen at school. As far as I know, it's in the nurse's office, and there's one nurse for four schools. One of the things that Jason had shared with me, the information that Dr. Cox had sent out, which I appreciate, so I read through that. And one of the things that it said in there is that the school nurse is the principal in kind of taking charge of that policy to ensure that all students are safe. I personally am not impressed. I also did not receive a phone call, or an email, or a voicemail, or anything. The school has my cell phone, they have my work number, they have my email. Again, I'm on Facebook. And Jason, I had messaged him, and he did respond to me, and let me know that the school nurse was supposed to be in contact. So I was a little bit disappointed, and I had emailed Dr. Cox today and let him know too that I had not heard from her. I listened to, Justin had shared the link to the meeting from last time, and I have watched that, and Scott and Jason had said, "Well, maybe we could contact the 12 families." And, you know, I understand the privacy issues. That was also published in the press, that Board members would be reaching out to the families. So I thought someone was going to contact me and talk to me about this, because it is something that's very important to the families who have children that have this life-threatening allergy. That being said, I mean, I appreciate that we're being able to be here and discuss this with you guys, because I do think that it's something that's important. You know, again, my concern is the age group with her. Right now, you know, she's little, and all of those kids are little, and they don't understand. It just, it, it makes me worried that there's going to be a bigger increase in the risk of her having a reaction. And if she's out on the playground and she has a reaction, she might not understand what's going on. And what if the staff who's watching her doesn't understand what's going on? What if she's off somewhere on the playground where a staff can't see her, and she has a reaction? These are things that scare me, so. It's a, it's a scary thing. I guess some, some questions that I. I guess some questions that I have are, you know, the segregating of tables. She takes hot lunch, so I do like, you know, I understand for your son, that might not be the best approach, but I do like the idea of not segregating the kids who have allergies, but having cold table lunches, or something along those lines. My other question is, is training happening now? I noticed in all of these, this research, it said, annual training on allergies, do all of the teachers know how to administer an epipen, because the nurse is not there? You know, I mean, four schools, one nurse, what are the chances, if somebody had a reaction, that the nurse is actually going to be there and know where to find, I mean, this is like instant, where to find the epipen, how to administer it? Are they going to understand? Those are all huge questions. And again, I am actually kind of glad that this has come up, because it's giving an opportunity to look at those things, when I didn't really think about it before, you know? I send her to school with her epipen, it's nut-free, she's okay. So, I do like that this is being looked at for that reason, because I do think that training is a huge deal, but not just training for the adults, for the kids in that school, too. You know, they need to understand what can happen to somebody with allergies, so. And then, the other thing that I had wondered, too, is if, do they have epipens readily available to students that might not have a, you know, somebody who doesn't have an allergy right now? Are there epipens around the school, or on the buses? I noticed one thing was to have it on the buses, or out on the playground, you know? You're far distance away from the nurse's office when you're on the playground. Do they have that in their first aid kit outside? Those kind of things, because that, to me, would be a big deal. If, you know, if they're going to go the route of having a nut sense, or, you know, I don't remember the wording, but not banning it, but being more aware of it, are they going to do those things, have epipens around, so that, and again, the training, I think that's a big deal? So, like I said, I'm more concerned with the age group that she's in. So, I can't speak for, you know, when she's in middle school or when she's in high school. She's extremely aware of her allergy, but I just worry about the age of the children that she's around, so.
Thank you. All of your comments also and questions have been mulling around in my mind, as well as others over the last few weeks as well. And that's part of what I think that we can accomplish by having this discussion and having it go to a committee to review for possible district-wide board policy, is that these types of things can be addressed.
Well, and I was actually surprised, listening to the last meeting, that it doesn't sound like there is actually an official policy. I was very surprised by that. And I always kind of wondered why Lincoln was not nut-free, but again, like Marcia said before, families had a choice. So, I didn't really think about it, because it didn't matter to me, my girls weren't going to go to Lincoln, well, now, they are. So, now, it becomes an issue, and something that, you know, I am at least glad that conversations are being had, so. But I, Scott, I did like your comment when you said at the last meeting that you didn't agree on segregating, because I, kids are picked on. I mean, she's, my first grader is very tall, she's almost taller than her sister, who's in third grade. She weighs more than her sister in third grade. I mean, she's, she's a bigger child, and, you know, she has a little bit of a speech problem, that she's going to be meeting with a speech therapist. I mean, there are already things that she's dealing with, that she feels make her different than everybody else. I don't want this to be something else added to it, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks.
I had asked, I hadn't even considered the medical privacy stuff, you know, before. I had asked for the list, contact, and then you said, well, the nurse should probably do that. And at that point, yeah, that made a lot of sense there.
Board policy limits public discussion to 20 minutes, and I'm at 17 and a half. Would there be a motion to extend the 20-minute time limit, please, from the board?
I'll make a motion, I have, extend the time limit.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to extend board policy time limit on public comment during the meeting, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Winterink?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes, motion carried. Now, you can continue without worrying about time limit.
Hi, my name is Nicole Banks. I have a daughter who is 13. She is in the middle school, in eighth grade, and she is severely allergic to peanuts, tree nuts. She actually is allergic to milk, soy, wheat, so I have extensive knowledge on that. Those allergies are not life-threatening to her whatsoever, as the peanut allergy is. So, we've found this out since McKenna was about four months old, and when things like that happen to you, you become very educated on something you never thought you would have to know about. So, I do have a lot of knowledge. I will say, I was never emailed or anything. I did get a call on Wednesday from the nurse, who left me a voicemail. I was in Boston for work, and I was in meetings, and I went out of the meeting, because first I saw the school called, so I instantly, heart dropped. It was the nurse, and she said, just, she had left a voicemail, there was concerns, you could contribute something on a site until Thursday, she wanted me to get ahold of her on that Wednesday. I tried calling right then and there. I got sent over, they said she was in meetings. However, I could get to her voicemail, the call ended, so I don't know if it was because I was in the meeting that I was in. I then went out on my next break, I tried to call again, the call got dropped again, after I spoke to someone in the office. Did it again, and a third time, the call got dropped. I said, I'm not getting put to her voicemail. I said, can I leave a message? And they said, no, you can leave a voicemail. I got transferred, I did get connected to voicemail, and it said, you cannot leave a message at this time. I would obviously like to keep the nut-free zone in place for our children, for the safety of our children. I grew up allergic to peanuts and peanut butter, but it wasn't known back then how severe it was. I was, maybe, I think there was another kid at Washington School that had it, it wasn't severe, I didn't carry an epipen, I didn't, I just avoided eating those things. There's several articles that I've read, that it is a lot more common now, it's a lot more life-threatening to people now. When my daughter, like I said, was very young, she had a RAS test. It's a blood test when you go see an allergist. The scores on those tests range from zero to six. Zero meaning you don't really have an allergy to anything, six meaning it's very, very bad. McKenna tested six for peanuts, and also peanut, tree nuts, and also eggs. On her milk, soy, wheat, et cetera, they varied, two, three, four, but she had the allergy. At the age of one, I was going to a health food store and getting her food, and she was basically eating rice noodles, rice cheese, rice. I mean, it was huge. Over the years, we've gradually added in some milk, and some soy, and, you know, your body, she has eczema, it'll, that shows in that. Usually, it's pretty common, if you have a peanut allergy, to have eczema, that kind of thing, but six for the peanut, tree nut is life-threatening, very, very dangerous. So, McKenna suffers with this life-threatening problem every day. She is at risks of anaphylactic shock, which it can occur immediately upon being exposed to peanut products. McKenna doesn't eat peanut products. McKenna's very smart. She had to become smart when she was very little. I don't have an issue with McKenna eating peanut products. I have an issue with McKenna being in a room where there's any peanut products. I have an issue with anybody touching my daughter that has had peanut products on them. I have a nephew who loves peanut products. He eats them at his house, and he knows that before he can come over to my house, he must wash his hands, he must, you know, he can't give her a kiss, none of that. We're, we've educated, my family became very educated on this, when it's a life-threatening thing. I realize that peanut products are something that a lot of people enjoy, and that's great. However, for my daughter, it's life-threatening. I see that people are voting and trying to decide if we should take this ban from the nut-free policy away. Are these educated votes? Is the public educated on how severe this is? Have they learned anything about this, and what can happen, and how it can happen? Or is this just like a guess, saying, actually, I want my kid to take peanut butter sandwiches, because it's cheap? And it's a lot easier than trying to keep food cold during the day, et cetera? So, I think it needs to be very educated. I understand we're asking opinions, but they, we need to have some education backing it, too. So, all right, sorry, I'm nervous. All right, I want to say that Jason Walker, who you were speaking of, was my daughter McKenna Davis. This happened here at the middle school. We were in AAU volleyball, and we were playing Waverly at that moment. We played several teams during the day, but that, we were playing Waverly, excuse me, we were not playing Waverly, Waverly was sitting on the corner, Waverly was sitting there eating some peanut products. I'm not exactly sure what they were. My daughter was line judging in the corner, and she noticed it. She smelled it, she noticed it. I mean, she's trained, she knows that this is very, this is life and death to her, so she noticed it. And she was motioning, I mean, mom, mom, they have products over here. So, I walked over there, and I said, I'm not sure if you're aware, but this is a nut-free school. There's a sign on the door that says nut-free zone, because this has happened to us several times at these AAU tournaments. And the sign is about this big. And when the door is usually open, you know, somebody's holding the door for you, you don't notice that when you're carrying in all your stuff, and so, probably just had no idea that it was a nut-free zone. I asked them if they would please clean it up, they were, they were, they said they were sorry. I said, can you please clean it up? And can you also please go wash your hands right away, because this is very dangerous? Within like three minutes, my daughter was having chest tightness, and she said, mom, we got to go. And she knows what that means. She's, we got to go. So, I gave her the epipen shot, me and her, and my oldest daughter, who is 16, who has no allergies, and enjoys peanut butter, but just can't have it around. We headed to the ER. When I headed to the ER, I don't have time to stop at a light, I don't have time for any of that. And I've got to stay calm, because your child is scared. And so, I'm flying across town at 70 miles an hour, not stopping at lights, all because somebody had to have that peanut butter. Can you imagine that feeling? Can you imagine the feeling of your throat closing, your chest tightening? Think about how that would feel as an adult. Then think about that as a child. Why would we ever want to put a child in a situation where that could happen to them? Not that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more.
Hello, my name is Jody Page, and I have three children. My oldest, Jacob, graduated 2014, and then I have two girls at the high school now that are in 10th grade and 12th grade. My son, Jacob, is severely allergic to peanuts, so kind of as a veteran, I thought I'd come and just share any experience that I've had, and things that have worked out great for us. My OCD's kicked in, I have just a little thing I just want to read to you. A little thing is, peanut butter is an inexpensive, convenient source of protein for children's lunches, but for the anaphylactic child, peanut butter is poison. Thus, the conflict, the safety of the anaphylactic child versus the right to just eat some peanut You can, I don't know, okay, sorry, I'm just like so nervous, I don't know why.
You're fine, just relax. We're nervous every Sunday night.
I know. He's not even here now. He's, he's going to be 20 this year, he goes to school at University of Iowa, working out great for him there. Before we moved back to our hometown of Charles City, we did live in another school district up until his, we came here his third grade year. At that school, they had peanut butter in the cafeteria at that time, because it was still kind of a new thing back then. You didn't see as many kids as you do now. And what they did was, he sat at a table by himself, and could eat his lunch over there. Second grade year was not so good, because the school at the time, we were working on policies, working on plans, you know, what do you do? How do you educate people? And we did have some trouble with some kids that would put peanut butter on themselves, chase them every day at lunch, call them names. I went through, watching my second grader cry, I don't want to die today. That's very hard as a parent, you know, when you're supposed to protect your children. So, that was really tough. And at that time, you know, we couldn't handle it anymore, and I really wanted to come, I have family here anyways, so we were like, let's go back home to Charles City. So, we came back here, I just, I have a little OCD, so I just like educate, educate, educate. I'm like, I know that there's that HIPAA thing, I mean, one suggestion, I'm thinking that what I did that worked great for us is, I just went right up and said, I don't care about that, here's his name, if you want to show his picture, we don't care, I'll sign a paper, I don't care, because it's better for the kids to know. And he's very fortunate, when we moved back here, his class is great. We, I have some great parents that have kids that are friends with them, that, you know, listen to us. I told them how, you know, what's happening. They were just great about it. He's had a reaction before, someone had eaten, this was at the other school, someone had eaten some, simply touched their fingertip to his cheek, and I don't know if you've all seen that movie, The Elephant Man, but that is what he looked like. He was unrecognizable, his face, his throat swelled shut just from the touch of a fingertip. Thankfully, as he got older, we're not so much on the touch, on the arms or anything, he does have to eat it. One thing I wanted to say that you had out there, the common objection is the false sense of security. I would encourage you to ask the kids who are allergic, what their false sense of security is. I think the people that make that are ones that do not have anaphylactic, because him going to school every day where it was, and where it was allowed, was just gut-wrenching for him. He did not want to go. He would get so upset, he would just vomit just from being so upset, because he did not want to go. Then, when we, I talked with the school, which I'm really surprised about the whole peanut policy thing, because I was told by administration at the Charles City High School that there was a peanut policy put in place for, so, that, and that's fine, I mean, I'm not after anybody, I'm just saying. So, that's where I think the confusion happens, is there's not enough communication, people aren't getting educated. I know my daughter, that's in 10th grade, said in a class, she came home, she said, guess what, we're learning how to do, use an epipen. I'm like, that's awesome. I mean, even though she knows how, but, but she said, the thing that's disappointing is, they're telling the story, which we know is about my son, that happened to him his freshman year, and she said, they're not telling the story right. They're saying how he ate something, he himself just chose to eat something, used the epipen, then was fine, and just continued on his day. And that is not what happened. Where you get that false sense of security is, what happened was, the school, it was homecoming week, September 2010, and in the culinary arts class, they made cookies for the entire school. And they knew that, you know, about his allergy, and at the end of the day, he was handed this cookie and said, this is peanut-free, this is safe, and he knows better, because by then, he's a freshman. And he said, are you sure? Are you sure? And they're like, yes, it is peanut-free, it is safe. So, as he was going out to football practice, he started to eat that cookie. Well, like most kids that have a bad allergy, they have allergies to other things, too. As he walked down, he got like woozy, got like the noodle legs, fell down in the grass. Well, he looked, and he had the quarter-sized hives, and he's like, oh, this is from grass, because he's allergic to grass. Every baseball season, I swell up. You know, we know that, it's not life-threatening, that's a no-big-deal thing to us. So, he's like, because in his mind, he's like, I was told this was peanut-free, this is peanut-free, I didn't do anything wrong. And then, the severe vomiting started, and that's when the coach noticed him and say, I don't think you're all right, and you need to sit down. And tried to call me, which I was at work, they called my mom, she was on her way. I happened to just leave work, see my mom, I see Jacob get out, fall on the ground, still vomiting, and the doctor described to me, as, a lot of you in the room know Jacob, and know he's a very pleasant kid, I, he was very combative, and they said, they explained it to like a diabetic that goes into insulin, where they get mean, he was like that, never seen him like that before in my life. But we, I knew, as a mother, looking at him, you had something, and he kept saying, I didn't eat anything, I'm not supposed to, and I didn't eat anything. And I'm like, something, you did, something happened. Take him to the, take him to the ER, and I did the same thing, drove 70 miles an hour there, I didn't have time, he stopped breathing on the way, I called my husband and said, I don't have time, and, you know, and I'm sorry, I live here, I did not have any faith in Charles City Hospital, but thank goodness, there were two angels in the form of nurses standing there. in the form of nurses standing there like this, with the shots, administered three shots, got him out of breathing tube. But I think what people don't understand either is, and I don't know if any of you all know this, once you administer an EpiPen, you have 25 minutes to get to the hospital, it's not over. And then after that, you are fully checked over to see if you need another dose. Well, Jacob did that day, because it was so severe, he had to be on the breathing machine, um, and for the next three days, he had a reaction. We had to continually watch him. I slept with him at night for three straight nights, because his body kept having a reaction, even though he wasn't eating anything. So it doesn't just stop, and I think some people think it's, you know, kind of an easy thing, or I think some people just don't think about it, because they're not around it, or they haven't been educated. And I just feel like, maybe if we talked about it a little bit more, I know with saying, he has two younger sisters, they of course know all about it, but they've said in school, they've never been educated on it. It's never been, you know. So I just think maybe that would be helpful. I know, um, Missy was talking about her little girl being in elementary. One thing that worked for us is Jacob's always had his, uh, EpiPen on him. When he was younger, um, he would set it on the teacher's table. If he moved a classroom, it was his responsibility to go grab that and take it to the next room, and it was something he worked out, and we all worked out with his teachers. And so fortunately, we've been very blessed to have that happen, and like I said, have such great friends that understood. Because in my experience, I've found that it's the kids really don't want it around them, because they don't want to be the one that accidentally gets it to them. Uh, it's the parents that have a problem with it, because they want the easy way out and sending a peanut butter sandwich with their child. And unfortunately, I wish that they would think about what would they do if it's their child. And I hope you all haven't made a decision yet, and I hope you all really think about this, because even though my son's not there anymore, I think having the peanut ban is a good thing. I really do. And I, and I just want to add, um, the allergic child has the law on his or her side, because the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 prevent, prohibits discrimination. And the point in short is that the law requires people to be inconvenienced and state, and the state to spend some money just to protect the rights of disadvantaged members in our community. Children with anaphylaxis deserve no less. As a parent, however, I believe that this should not have to be fought out in the courts, because I easily could have. Because when, his freshman year, I know for a fact, because I did speak with a lawyer, school was negligent on their part. I could have easily taken the school to the courts, but that's not what my point was. My point was, let's, let's settle this, let's educate people, let's let people learn, you know, because that's not what it's about. I mean, too many people are suing people, and that's just crazy talk. Let's just get the facts and let's, you know, let's do that. Because this is an issue about community and social responsibility. Schools are public institutions to which we entrust our children on the assumption that they will be educated and kept safe. When one member of a community is in danger, one hopes that other members will rally behind that individual, even if the support is not always the most convenient option. The extent to which we demonstrate this to our children will shape their vision of community and responsibility. And I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All very educational for everyone, including the community.
I'm Nancy Simerson. I'm a substitute teacher in several local districts. They all have different policies, and honestly, I think that you have many substitute teachers and aides that come into this district that really don't, we don't know. We walk into these classrooms, and we don't know that these students are like this. Usually, a, a child will tell us that they are, but I've never, in all, in my forty-some years of, of education, been educated on this peanut allergy. So I'm hearing a lot of things here today. So here I am, I'm in this classroom, and these things happen. So somehow, at the beginning of the year, anyone who's a substitute really should be educated on this situation. And I'm thinking about the high school now, with Nicole sending there. They have the Smart Lunch, and so the kids are all over the high school, correct? So does he take his lunch with him wherever he goes to meet with the other kids?
He does eat in the lunchroom, um, but yes.
Oh, I gotta have you.
Oh.
She's got to come to the bike.
Yeah, can you come up? Because I've been at the high school, and I know it's, it's wonderful, because as he gets older, he's going to be wanting to go to different clubs or different things.
That's right. Well, for him, he does stay in the lunchroom while he eats, but I do have an older daughter, who is in 11th grade. She travels during the lunchtime. She actually ta, takes her own lunch also, so that falls into the taking, I mean, she does not have a peanut allergy, but she will go to different classrooms and explore different things, and she's allowed to take her lunch there. And so that's another dilemma that you have in the high school scenario, which I think the Smart Lunch is a wonderful thing for the kids. It gives, expands their learning, yet you have that issue with the lunch being carried throughout the school and not contained in one small area. And I just wanted to mention really one quick thing about him. He actually had, um, an incident where I had to take him to the emergency room a few days ago, and that was for his, as a serious outdoor allergy. He stopped breathing, and, and I had to take him in, and he ended up getting really sick. But that was just one of his minor allergies, so the peanut allergy is a very severe allergy. And my fear is, that could happen at school. I, I usually don't want to, let him go to field trips because of it, because that's my responsibility as a parent. And so the peanut allergy also concerns me. Are people going to be aware of, of exactly the signs of what's going on? You know, it's, and it's different in every child. But thank you for mentioning the Smart Lunch.
Well, I thought about that, and then, um, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you something else. Well, I'll think about it, but, yeah, it's, it brings up those questions. And I've always thought that, you know, when I come to volleyball meets, like you said, this incident happened here at an AAU thing. I've been at volleyball meets, I've been at wrestling meets, where people bring in all their own food. And so even though it says it's peanut-free there, you, I don't know how you really can control this. Well, that's what I was going to ask her, because I do eat peanut butter every day. I probably have two pieces of toast with peanut butter, because it is a good protein. So if I have eaten it before I come to school, that's what I was going to ask you. You know, I mean, is it still, you know, I wash my hands.
Yeah. What I can tell you from my experience from him in the elementary and the middle schools, and this is a discussion I had with his teachers, um, is that they would eat before school, and that was fine. I mean, he, he goes to his grandparents' house, they eat a peanut butter bagel in the morning. You wash your hands, come to school. I mean, I feel comfortable with that. And he, personally, for him, he's at the age, he's got full and total awareness, he understands that something could happen. But by no means would we bar anybody, you know, from having it outside of school.
Well, you just wonder.
And that's everyday, regular life. We ask on an everyday basis. I just feel like school is a separate setting, it's a safe zone for children of all types, and, and so, yeah, no, you should be perfectly fine, as long as you wash your hands before you come to school, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, resoundingly, from every parent that's spoken tonight, there's one thing we can all agree upon, is we're lacking in education. Education is power, we've talked about that, and a lot of things that have been happening here in the Charles City District. And we are going to turn this over to the Policy Committee, and they're going to come up with an education plan, and, um, we'll look to the future of educating people, so we all understand what to do if we eat a peanut butter sandwich before we come to lunch, or, uh, before we come to school. Um, so thank you very much for taking the time.
We're glad we set the date back, because you guys got a lot of work to do.
Thanks for volunteering for that Policy Committee, too.
Any other comments from the board? If not, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Winterink?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes, motion carried five to zero. Agenda item seven, limited English proficient allowable cost. Dr. Cox?
Applications are due on October 1st, and it costs more money to run the limited English proficient program than we get funding from the state. And so this is a request to have the authority for $48,203.03. And the recommendation would be that we do that.
And we make this up the same way we make up the special ed deficit?
Right, we have the option to levy an additional property tax to make that up. But it's really the authority that's important.
Okay.
Great.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to the School Budget Review Committee for the maximum allowable LEP expenses of $48,203.03.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda item seven as presented. Any further comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Winterink?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes, motion carried five to zero. Agenda item eight, Estes Construction Amendment to the Service Agreement.
The amendment before you is because we had the packages done in two different, uh, time periods, and so it's an adjustment in the way that their calculation, uh, is figured for Estes Construction.
Motion to approve the amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Estes Construction, amount of $629,049.
I'll second that motion.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Estes Construction, and the amount of $629,049. Any further discussion from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Winterink?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes, motion carried five to zero. Agenda item nine, the SEAC, or School Improvement Advisory Committee.
Names are before you. It's a 21-member committee, and it's comprised of students, parents, teachers, community members. We've got two board members, uh, the principal at Macaulay-Conception, principal at Lincoln Elementary, and myself.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the 21 names on the SEAC Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the SEAC names as presented. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Winterink?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes, motion carried five to zero. Agenda item 10 is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
The Consent Agenda has been moved and seconded to approve as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Winterink?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Agenda item 11, Important Upcoming Dates.
Next Monday, the board training over in Clear Lake. Again, homecoming week starts October 5th. Parent-teacher conferences are October 12th, just around the corner, and then the regular board meetings.
What time are we?
We didn't have to register for the.
For Clear Lake? No.
What time are we leaving?
Uh, probably 4:40.
From?
Bus Barn.
Okay.
Where's the AVA office?
Uh, next to the airport.
What time did you say?
Having no other business to come before the board, we will adjourn at 8:12.
Did you notice, Jim, here's the date, the dates of that SEAC Committee?